If you'll please rise for the pleasure, remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't see Robin Brothers here. I'm going to have to enlist.
Lord, we thank you for this day and we pray for your wisdom and guidance. Bless our city and bless everyone who's here. We thank you for these, all the individuals who are stepping up for the commission tonight. Amen.
Thank you. Mike McPhie, please take the roll.
Councilman Wertz-Bacher has asked to be excused. Councilman Lloyd?
Here.
Councilman Schleck?
Present.
Councilman Barr?
Here.
Councilman Valerius?
Here.
Councilwoman Nick?
Here.
Treasurer Stimer?
Present.
And Mayor McLeod?
Here.
We have a quorum, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We're going to start out this evening with a presentation by Chief Aaron Faltz.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. Tonight, first thing we're going to bring up is Officer St. Andre. This year, I saw an email come out from MSP publicizing their eighty-seventh annual pistol tournament. We haven't done it since I've been here. I went through the records. I couldn't find it for thirty-five years since Allen Park has participated. So I instructed my range officer, I said, "Take the top three shooters, go to the match, see what we can do." And our Officer St. Andre took home first place for females, which was a huge accomplishment. She's one of our top shots. She's came in in our department as top three. I think she actually, number two behind Winger.
Yeah.
And first place in the match. So I'm very proud to present. Congratulations. This is just the beginning. It's our second-year officer. We have twenty-eight years to go with her. Hopefully, great things will come. Outstanding. Current graduation.
Thanks.
You're welcome. We have one more announcement. Christopher Arnaldi has been an officer since 2017. He's gone to MNet. He's a local young man that went through AP High. He is now being promoted to the rank of Sergeant, and we're very proud of him. We're going to have Chelsea, his wife, come up, and she's going to do the penning. Chelsea?
Thank you.
You're welcome. They're kind of tough, so.
Great. Thank you.
All the way through the skin.
Thank you guys very much. I appreciate it. I'm excited to be back, working in the city, finally, and looking forward to a, hopefully a long career. Thank you.
Before everyone leaves, if any of the council members would like to comment on either of these two.
Oh, yes. Sorry, I'm a sergeant, that's right.
Thought you'd done that.
Congratulations. It's with great honor I do this, too. Raise your right hand at the end, say you do, you swear, you affirm whatever you feel most comfortable with. Excuse me. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan? And that you will endeavor to secure and maintain an honest and efficient administration of the affairs of the City of Allen Park, free from partisan distinction or control, and that you will perform the duties of police sergeant to the best of your ability, so help you God?
I do.
All right, now, don't go sitting down yet.
Sergeant, Sergeant.
That's an order.
No, we usually make our comments at the end of the meeting, but on occasions like this, we let the council members make their comments to you. So this evening, I'll start with Mr. Barr.
Well, I want to say congratulations.
Thank you.
I know what it is to wear the badge, not for Allen Park, but nevertheless. So congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy it.
Thank you very much.
Oh, boy. I've known Chris for a while. Been about, I don't know, fifteen years or so. I know him from relatives of his, the Lalo family. He wasn't a Cabrini kid, but he was an Allen Park kid, so I won't hold that against him. But I just wanted to say that ever since I've known him, though, even from the young high school years to now, you know, he's been one of the most respectful and honorable people, person that I know. And it's an honor for me to sit up here while you're promoted to Sergeant. And I just wanted to say, thank you for being the man, and the police officer, and the son and friend that you are. I'm blessed to know you, and the residents of the city are blessed to have you serve for the Allen Park Police Department. And also, thank you to your wife for being the wife of a law enforcement officer. It's not an easy job. It's actually probably a tougher job than you have. And all I ask is that you stay safe.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.
Yeah, well, Chris, I can't say anymore than what he's already said. We work together at Parks and Recs, and so everything that Matt said about you is definitely true. I just said double on that. But it's nice to see that both you and Jayden are young, so you're going to be in our department for a long time. So congratulations to the both of you.
Thank you very much.
Just want to say thank you. Definitely thank you for your family, for, they're going to do the most sacrifice at night, worrying, aiding. Congratulations on the trophy. As my colleague said, you better bear, get a case or a trophy while ready. I'm sure you're going to earn a lot more.
Thank you.
So, just thank you for everything you do to serve the city. I think, you know, I'm so appreciative of anybody that decides to come and work here and make this a safer place, but it just hits a little differently when, you know, we're homegrown. You know, whenever I talk to the kids at the high school, and the thing about going to the police service, the fire service, always make the point like, hey, come and serve and protect the city that you live in, your family, and just so appreciative that we have you out there, keeping my family safe, keeping your family safe. So thank you so much for everything you do. Thank you to your family. I've got a proud mom. She talks to me about you all the time.
Thank you very much.
So, thank you so much. And Officer St. Andre, awesome job. You know, keep it up. Makes me sleep a little bit better at night, know that we got someone like you out there. So thank you guys both so much.
Thank you very much.
Very much appreciate it.
Treasurer?
Thank you, Sergeant. Arnaldi, a very popular name in this city, and I'm sure that you'll do good by your name, and we appreciate that. As long as you do great by the city, everything's fine. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And we appreciate you choosing Allen Park.
Thank you.
Your hometown.
Mr. Mizzi?
A lot of what they say, you know, but I remember when you were hired, God, it's been, you deserve it, and thank you, but I want to thank your mom most of all. She's a school nurse, so God bless. It's more important than you, so. But congratulations, and I got to tell you, my, I grew up with my mother instilling in my brain, well, women are better shots than men at shooting. My mom was in Aberdeen, Scotland. She was the Aberdeen champion, two years, not in a row, but it was boys and girls, and she was twice first place. So, girls are better shots. But again, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And just in closing, as you can tell, we're very pleased to have both of you be part of our force. I'm very proud of both of you. And I'm sorry, but if Officer St. Andre could come back one more time, and we'll let somebody get a shot of the two of you.
Not that way, though.
No. No pun intended. Again, our deepest appreciation, as you can tell, we couldn't be prouder of you than your own families. So thank you again very much. You are very, very appreciated, and I hope you realize that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next order of business is a proclamation for the Red Ribbon Week, which is from October twenty-third through the thirty-first, and it's pertaining to substance abuse awareness. And I'm hoping that some members of the Red Ribbon Club are here, and I believe, is Officer Knutson here also?
Well, we've got two of our student commissioners, our two of our Red Ribbon Club.
Well, if any Red Ribbon members are here, would you please come up? Because I do want to give this proclamation to you when I am finished. Recognizing and in honor of Red Ribbon Week, whereas alcohol and other drug abuse in this nation has reached epidemic stages, and whereas it is imperative that visible unified prevention education efforts by community members be launched to eliminate the demand for drugs, and whereas the National Family Partnership is sponsoring the National Red Ribbon Campaign, offering citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles, no use of illegal drugs, no illegal use of legal drugs, and whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign will be celebrated in every community in America during Red Ribbon Week from October twenty-three through the thirty-first, and whereas business, government, parents, law enforcement, media, medical, religious institutions, schools, senior citizens, service organizations, and youth will demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this week-long campaign, and whereas the City of Allen Park further commits its resources to ensure the success of the Red Ribbon Campaign. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Allen Park does hereby proclaim October twenty-three through thirty-first, 2025, as Red Ribbon Week, and encourages its citizens to participate in drug prevention education activities, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free state. In witness whereof, I do hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Allen Park, Michigan, to be affixed this fourteenth day of October, 2025. And who would like to take this proclamation, please?
And would any of you care to make the statement?
I know that's probably impromptu. I want people to understand how important this is, and it is an outstanding thing to see these students involved. The Guidance Center has a group called Students Stop Underage Drinking and Drugs, and they hold quarterly meetings now, and I've met several students there on occasion, from Allen Park High School as well as other high schools. There's all kinds of data that shows what our youth is being exposed to. We need to take this seriously. It's not a laughing matter. And congratulations to you for stepping up. Thank you very much for being here.
Madam Mayor, through the chair, we still need to approve the agenda in the minutes.
Yes, I went right from roll call.
To the fun stop.
To the fun stop. Thank you. Backing up. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Schleck. Second by Mr. Valerius. Are there any changes?
Resolution one, can we change it to where we cross off where it says Fire Department Acceptance? Because it's a grant for the Festivities Commission.
Right, so it will be resolution to approve the Festivities Commission grant.
Correct.
Correct.
Any amount of, is that acceptable to the?
Yes.
Yes.
Making that change?
We're taking out Fire Department's acceptance of A.
Any other changes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of September twenty-third?
Motion.
Second.
By Mr. Valerius. Second by Mr. Barr. Any corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. Well, now we're back on track. Our next order of business is the appointment of student commissioners. In my memo, I indicated that I contact all of the schools to which Allen Park residents attend, including those outside of the city. On this year, seven students applied to serve as student commissioners on the boards and commissions, which are eligible to host a student commissioner. I am pleased to recommend the following appointments for your approval. And when I call your name, if you are here, if you would please come up, so that you can be recognized and sworn in. Sophia Buchanan, junior, Allen Park High School, Beautification Commission. Alexandria McHugh, junior, Allen Park High School, Beautification Commission. Mia Wong, junior, St. Francis Cabrini, Downtown Development Authority. April Cardinal, senior, Allen Park High School, Historical Commission. Isabella Skelf, senior, Allen Park High School, Historical Commission. Julian Harris, junior, Inner City Baptist High School, Parks and Recreation Commission. Braden Burns, junior, Allen Park High School, Planning Commission. Their appointments will expire as of May thirtieth, 2026. May I have a motion to approve these appointments?
Motion.
Second. By Mr. Lloyd. Second by Mr. Valerius. Comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. Well, now we're back on track. Our next order of business is the appointment of student commissioners. In my memo, I indicated that I contact all of the schools to which Allen Park residents attend, including those outside of the city. On this year, seven students applied to serve as student commissioners on the boards and commissions, which are eligible to host a student commissioner. I am pleased to recommend the following appointments for your approval. And when I call your name, if you are here, if you would please come up, so that you can be recognized and sworn in. Sophia Buchanan, junior, Allen Park High School, Beautification Commission. Alexandria McHugh, junior, Allen Park High School, Beautification Commission. Mia Wong, junior, St. Francis Cabrini, Downtown Development Authority. April Cardinal, senior, Allen Park High School, Historical Commission. Isabella Skelf, senior, Allen Park High School, Historical Commission. Julian Harris, junior, Inner City Baptist High School, Parks and Recreation Commission. Braden Burns, junior, Allen Park High School, Planning Commission. Their appointments will expire as of May thirtieth, 2026. May I have a motion to approve these appointments?
Motion.
Second. By Mr. Lloyd. Second by Mr. Valerius. Comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. Thank you. And now, Mr. Mizzi will swear you in.
Raise your right, I'm going to have to make a little daffodil, just raise your right hand, and at the end, say, "I do want to swear a lot of those." Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and that you will endeavor to secure and maintain an honest and efficient administration of the affairs of the City of Allen Park, free from partisan distinction or control, and that you will perform the duties of beautification commissioner, times two, DDA student commissioner, historical commissioner, student, times two, parks and recreation student commissioner, and planning student commissioner to the best of your ability, so help you God. Thank you. [applause]
I am that you have chosen to participate in this program. And those of you who are juniors, I hope that you come back again next year. We had a returner on our historical commission, so a very good experience. And I think the exposure you will get to what goes on in the city will be invaluable to you as you go forward. So thank you again. Now, we will move on to the City Administrator's Operational Report, and if anybody needs to leave, feel free to do so. I know that, I know that one of you has a volleyball game, so.
Wait a minute, this is the good stuff here. Come on.
If Tom would have been here, they would have stayed.
Disrespectful.
I know that one of them has a volleyball game, so.
All right. One person's excused.
It's nothing against you personally, man.
I know. Get a little complex.
You're a very likable man.
Just some.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm here to give the Administrator's Report on behalf of Mr. Murray, who is not here. So we got, once again, Parks and Recreation, they're on top of the list again. So you got two items so far this evening. So Allen Park Civic, Citizen Civic Fund is helping Parks and Recreation with the purchase of two non-verbal communication boards that'll be installed in the parks. Along with that, they're going, they're going to help with some bleachers, too, for a ball field, that's to be determined. And I know there was some discussion at our department head meeting on what a non-verbal communication board is. So I did include kind of an example in a short synopsis on what these boards are. So if I may, real quick, they're visual tools designed to assist individuals with limited or no speech in expression with their thoughts. They typically consist of images, symbols, and words that represent various concept, actions, or items, making communication easier for non-verbal children and individuals with conditions such as autism, stroke recovery, learning disabilities. These boards help bridge communication gaps, providing visual aids that are easy to understand. So I think it's phenomenal. I know they had them in the parks before. Unfortunately, they get damaged, and so it's nice that the APCCF is helping to get some new ones installed. Parks and Rec will, once again, be hosting the state quartiles for this upcoming high school hockey season, which I think I mentioned last time. Attestment to the great work that the, the rink looks, the staff that works there, and all the upgrades, they do a phenomenal job where they're, and just, once again, people want to play at our rink, which is nice. The next one is, want to let everybody know that DTE has an incentive rebate program that some city departments qualify for, sizable rebates for any energy-efficient upgrades that have been implemented since 2023. What this is, DTE has set, they set aside every, money every year for different organizations that upgrade any of their equipment to be more efficient, and so there's a rebate program. I think Parks and Rec, I think I mentioned that they got $10,000. They came in, did all the work. They evaluated the building. They organized a contractor to come out, and they did all the work. So it's nice that they offer that program, and several departments have been able to take advantage of that. I believe that when we did City Hall, I think DTA came out and evaluated us. I don't recall what kind of money we got, but we did get some. The Allen Park Historical Museum is having a great pumpkin party on Sunday, October twenty-sixth, from 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. They're inviting people to come decorate the museum. They're going to do carving, they're going to carve pumpkins, they're going to supply carving tools. Donuts and cider will be provided, limited to twenty-five families that register. Visit the City of Allen Park Historical Museum Facebook page for more information. I'm assuming that they might come up and speak during comments, kind of in case they want to clarify anything. It's that time of year, too. The orders from Platte Moran came in last week, and they're here this week to prepare for the annual audit for the city. So stay tuned on that, and we'll be getting updates on that shortly. With the approval of block grant, intersection and ramp improvements have begun off of Watson. This is on the north side, in the Rogers subdivision, if anybody doesn't know where the Watson is. Excuse me, this project is anticipated to be done by Halloween. So that's making the ramps, the sidewalk ramps, more ADA compliant, is what that's for. Homewares on Hanover, Euclid, and O'Connor have now been connected and served by the new water mains that were installed. There's some miscellaneous cleanup that still has to be done, and I'm sure some restoration that still has to be done. I don't know how much restoration will get done. It might look ugly through the winter, but I'm sure spring will come back and really tidy it up. The Administrator would like to acknowledge James Dag at the Allen Parks, or Parks and Recreation for his five years of service with the City of Allen Park this month.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept and file the Administrator's Report?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Nick. Seconded by Mr. Barr. One of the male voices to my left. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Public comments are open. All we ask is that you provide your name and the street on which you live. Do not give your full address. You're limited to five minutes, and the only thing we ask is that you remain civil.
Excuse me, good evening, Mark Bailey. Philomen Boulevard and/or Park Avenue at McNally Shoes for forty-three years, representing the Allen Park Elks. In 1989, I joined the Elks Club and committed to having a Halloween function for the special needs. And this now is the thirty-seventh year that it's been going on, and it's pumpkin heaven. We've missed a couple pumpkin picks because we wanted to. We'll be picking up some pumpkins. The special needs individuals are calling and reserving. Thirty-seven years. Then in July of 1995, when the DDA redid Park Avenue and put electric boxes at all the trees, and there were many more trees, they ended up taking out the corner trees and left the middle ones, which is, there was too many trees. But from July of 1995, I, in the DDA, I was the one who lit up Park Avenue for all those years. Then in September tenth of 2024, all the GFI boxes on the trees were eliminated, and I was told I will get over it. Well, I'm still not over it, but what's done is done. I lit up Park Avenue for nearly thirty years. I've been doing the pumpkin patch for thirty-seven years. Been running a store for forty-three years here. It's the, on your item to close the street, it says Allen Park Pumpkin Patch. Well, it's the Allen Park Elks Pumpkin Patch, but I greatly appreciate the DPS, Parks and Rec, fire, police, and the council people who've helped me through these years. And I'm enjoying the city so much that my mother, who's ninety-three, now lives with us. So you might see me wheeling around, and I thank you in advance. On the street closure from three till nine, really needed to go till ten, because the event ends at nine, but we have to clean up, so I need the street closed till ten. And I want to thank you again for thirty-seven years. Special needs people are calling, and I'll have extra flyers that I'll leave out here if anybody's interested in helping. Pumpkin pickup, Sunday night, nine o'clock, get over to the village, they let us in, and we gather them, we bring them down. DPS has helped in the past, cleaning them up, and I've done it on my own, cleaning it up some years. So if anybody wants to come on down Sunday night, the next two Sunday nights, feel free. And I now only have one block to work with, but no power. DDA's helped with the, and Parks and Rec with the Showmobile, and I get a generator, and we know the generator fiasco with the street fair, but it is what it is. fiasco with the street fair, but it is what it is. So I'd like you to extend the closing hours, and I invite you personally to come down and see the activity that goes on inside of the lodge for 37 years. Mr. Arnaldi came as a young child. Some of these people have started when they were infants. Now they're in their 30s. Some started coming when they were in their 30s. Now they're senior citizens. It is a fabulous event. When I joined the lodge, they said, "Oh, you want to be an officer?" I said, "Nope, I want to take care of special needs people, and I want to decorate Park Avenue," and I'm hoping I'll be able to continue this. You know, my heart's here. So that's it. And if you see me wheeling my mom around, you can say, "Hi, Clara. How's your daughter-in-law, Claire?" Thank you very much.
To the Librarians, State Representative, we just got the budget done. I wanted to come personally. It was a tough budget. It took a lot longer than usual. It was a minority this time, so it was a lot different process than the last two years. But I have some good news. There was only 20 representatives on my side that got district-specific spending items, and I just want to let you know, I was able to get $1.31 million for a firetruck for the City of Allen Park.
Oh, nice.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there anything else you'd like to say?
There's, in the budget, we're still, you know, going through the details, work everything out. There's a Public Safety Trust Fund now that's gonna give more money to locals for law enforcement, local funding for roads. You're gonna get more money on that, and the school aid budget per pupil will be more money than we've ever gotten. So as more details come through, what actually Allen Park and the other cities will get, I'll keep you updated.
Would any council members like to make a comment?
Thank you very much.
I will.
We deserve it.
I will, I will thank you again. I will thank you for this year. I will thank you for what you've done for us in the previous years. Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
If no one else is coming, ah.
Good evening. Juan Perota, Historic Chair, and live on Marquise. Real quick, Matt touched on the event we have coming up. He already said everything about it. That's, thank you, Matt. Also, we will be doing trick-or-treating again this year, from 5 to 9, at the Historic Museum. And I wanted to take a minute to thank Mike and the Boy Scout troop, 1061. They've been over at the museum working on the handicap ramp. It's an Eagle Scout project that they've done in the past, and currently, we're, they're on the, just getting ready to stain it, right, Mike?
The boys stained it, but they're not done yet. They gotta do the lattice, and then come over and finish it off.
Okay. So we're almost done, and then I wanted to thank Mike and the Boy Scout troop for that. Jacob, it's Jacob's project that he's doing. He's going as, for an Eagle Scout. Yeah, and look forward to having that done. But thank you.
Thank you. So through the chair, when Jacob is, when it's complete, can we bring him here when he gets his Eagle Scout badge?
I can ask him, yeah.
We've had, we've had mixed in the past.
Have the chief go get him.
Charles Blevins Champagne. I just came up here for a few things. Number one, even though it's on record, if you even Google my address, 15744, in front of my house, there's a little patch that every time I go into my driveway, it's a little, needs to be filled. If that can be taken care of, that'd be great, especially being a busy road with the school buses and all that stuff. Second, down my street, where the lights are on Champagne and Allen, there used to be, I think it was a children's medical thing right across from the library. There has been these two light poles from, I'm assuming, DTE. It's been there for a year or two. Between the light poles, the grass is growing, so that's how long it's been since they've been taken care of. If those can be removed, that'd be great. Also, when, again, make sure you're supporting local businesses. They're the heart of our city. And then, how time is flying, next month is your midterms. Just saying. Enjoy every moment, because some of you, again, term limited, some can rerun, but enjoy every moment. Again, focus again with the residents. That's who put you up here. I'm so thankful, because back in the day, always wanted a digital sign in front of City Hall. I'm glad the fire department has a digital sign and bringing, communicating information about the city. Again, like, I know there was dates and all that stuff, so it's great. Again, glad the library has one as well. But, and then, great job to our, to police officers, and then all the volunteering that's gonna be happening in our city. But again, always keeping the optimistic, positive stuff in the city. A resident also came up, I know this is more of a DDA thing, the tree by the glass, glass onion, the tree roots is lifting the sidewalk a bit, so just something for DDA to look into as well. But again, thanks, Mark, for the pumpkin patch all these years. But again, it's great to see things keep moving forward in our cities. But again, like I said, enjoy every moment for the next two years, and again, stay positive, but thank you.
No one else is coming up. We will close public comments and move on to the consent agenda, which tonight consists of claims and accounts in the payroll report. Motion, please.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Valerius. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We will pay our bills. Resolutions. Resolution one, to approve the Festivities Commission grant in the amount of $4,017 for a 10-foot table for the fire station kitchen remodel. Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Nick.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Barr. Any comments or questions? I think most of you read the memo. This is to purchase material, and the cost covers the building supplies, and labor will be donated by two Allen Park businesses, which include Homestead Hardwood Furniture and Five Lakes Wood Company. It's going to be a 10-foot solid walnut kitchen table with cast aluminum bases, and is designed to seat 6 to 8 firefighters and guests, and will replace the current ornout table. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is approved. Let Festivities Commission spend that money. Resolution two, to approve the IGA for improvements to Northern Allen Park for the fiscal year 2024-25, with Wayne County, to accept an allotment of $11,865 for improvements to the Gingham Dog Tatla. Motion, please.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Barr. We'd like to, this is an intergovernmental agreement, which is standard when we receive funding from Wayne County, and Mr. Fulton will enlighten us.
I was actually gonna have Julie and cut his teeth and introduce it to you. Funny, huh? So the IGA agreement was started with Commissioner Baydoun, who represents the northern part of Allen Park. Mayor McLeod and I met him about a year ago, so the ball kept rolling. They originally tried, we looked at Brand Park, but Brand Park potentially is falling into the CDBG grant that we potentially get that Markibier had written. So therefore, I contacted his office, asked if we could shift the money staying in Northern Allen Park. Gingham Dog is one of the three remaining parks that we haven't done. So, good news is, we've done the other parks. The bad news is, we've still got three to go, and it's quite expensive. So the $11,865, if approved, will go toward Gingham Dog Park. We will have to supplement it in some capacity through our budget. That's why I would like to get it done before this fiscal year ends, end of June of '25, or so, '26. However, this is good through the end of September of '27, if it doesn't happen to be done within our fiscal. That's when the county fiscal will run out. It'll start again October 1st. So we have a two, year-and-a-half shelf life. I'd like to get it done before we can run into a new fiscal year, starting next June. So what the play equipment is, I believe in your packet, you had a copy from Game Time, one of our preferred vendors. I think as of today, the tariffs began, so that could affect that number. We'll get that updated upon approval of the acceptance. I'll have to take this back to Wayne County. Mike, I'll have to get with you, making sure that we get our information signed off on, send it back to them. They send us back an approval, so you're starting to understand a little bit of the concept, why it can be long and laborious. But we're getting there. We're inching along, which is just great. So we're just asking that you accept the grant, the $11,865 through the Parks Village money, and hopefully be used, no, later than September of '27.
Right. Right now, it appears as though the cost to us would be minimal, because the quote was for just $12,200. So as of this date, we're only looking at about $400.
Correct. Potentially, though, too, Mayor, we have, we have to put potentially either rubber or the engineered wood fiber in, something in that flooring, so we have our rate fall capacity all set up there. We wouldn't have enough funds, even if a new fiscal hits right now, to potentially put in the safety tiles. On average, that footprint for that park could be about $80,000 for this tile. So you can kind of see the safety. I'm not trying to put a minimum number on it, but that park can still survive like other parks have done in the city with the engineered wood fiber and/or rubber potentially that goes in there. So you ever see when the lions get tackled or somebody, that rubber that pops from the turf? That would be a similar situation if we were able to afford that. Otherwise, we'll shoot for the engineered wood fiber mulch. So, which has serviced for a long time, and most, well, most of our parks have been redone, so three or four still carry that mulch.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is approved. Resolution three, to approve the outdoor event application from AB Fitness's Fund for Fall Event on October 24th, with final approval from the Building Department. And as we noted, the event will be held from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Nick. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is approved. Resolution four is to approve the application to close Park Avenue to vehicle traffic between White Avenue and Harrison Avenue on Friday, October 24, between, I'm sorry, beginning at 3:00 p.m. and ending at 8:00 p.m. for the annual Halloween trunk-or-treat event. Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Schleck.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Barr. Any comments or questions? This is an annual event, put on by the Allen Park Trust of Purion Church and the DDA. Quite successful. It's been expanding.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Members of council, just would like to highlight, this is an annual request we make of you. Last year, you may recall, we asked for your approval, and you granted it, to close two blocks of Park Avenue from Harrison to Cleveland. This year, we're asking for approval to add an additional block from Cleveland to White due to the popularity of the event and the increasing number of Allen Park businesses and nonprofit organizations that bring vehicles and donate candy to children and families. So this will culminate from Harrison, going all the way down to White Avenue this year, if you approve, and that'll lead right into the final farmer's market. We'll be doing that same night.
Comments or questions?
How many vendors' vehicles do you have?
I do. As of this morning, actually, I think we are up to 67. We could not fit in the two blocks that we did last year. You're welcome.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is approved. Resolution five, to approve the application to close Park Avenue to vehicle traffic between Philamine Boulevard and White Avenue on Friday, October 31st, beginning at 3:00 p.m. and ending at 9:00 p.m. for the 37th Annual Pumpkin Patch Halloween Event. Motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
Nick and Lloyd.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We at DDA are appearing before you. We're just the facilitator, if you will, of this application. It's an event that the DDA supports. The DDA, obviously, this occurs within our DDA district, and we're seeking your support on behalf of the Elks for this road closure to occur on actual Halloween Day, Friday, October 31st.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey requested that it stay open until 10:00 o'clock. Is that possible, that we can do that here?
I think that can be altered. I was just looking at the application. I'm not quite sure where the information came from. It said approximate finish time, 9:00 p.m. So we could change that to state 10:00 p.m.? Is that all right with Ms. Nick and Mr. Lloyd?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
So we will change that to ending at 10:00 p.m. And with that, if there's no other comments or questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Now, we move on to other business, and this evening, we have a host of ordinances. May I have a motion for the first and second reading of proposed ordinance number 6-2025?
Motion.
Motion by, everybody. Motion by, what did I have?
Schleck.
Schleck and Valerius.
Correct.
Any comments or questions? Hearing?
I guess if we could just get an ad clip out of Mr. Baker, Mr. Fulghier, would just want to give a.
Right, before we have the reading. Would like to address this.
Well, good evening. So, you know, this ordinance is designed to deal with a situation of, well, two things. One is, the definition of weeds keeps changing, so we're modifying our local ordinance to fall in line with that. And it's also designed to address a situation where people are planning a lot of things on the area between the street and a sidewalk, as well as areas which are real close to the other neighbor's driveway, as well as the sidewalk.
Just trying to adjust, like, sightline issues, and then approaching on sidewalk and those kind of things.
And boy.
Line of sight safety.
Yes.
If there's no other questions?
We're looking for, did we get a motion to authorize the first and second reading?
Yes.
By Lonely. Did we vote on that?
Oh, that's right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Proposed ordinance 06-2025, in ordinance of City of Allen Park Code of Ordinances, amending Chapter 16 environment, by the repeal and readoption of Section 16-119 definitions and Section 16-121 prohibitions of Article 4, noxious weeds, grass, and refuse. To define weeds and to prohibit plants and/or structures which exceed 12 inches on land which is located between a sidewalk and a street, or within 36 inches from an adjacent sidewalk, driveway, or property line. Second reading of proposed ordinance 06-2025, in ordinance of City of Allen Park Code of Ordinances, amending Chapter 16 environment, by the repeal and readoption of Section 16-119. amending Chapter sixteen environment by the repeal and readoption of Section sixteen dash one-one-nine definitions and Section sixteen dash one-two-one prohibition of Article four, noxious weeds, grass, and refuse to define weeds and to prohibit plants or structures which exceed twelve inches on land which is located between a sidewalk and a street or within thirty-six inches from an adjacent sidewalk, driveway, or property line.
Thank you. May I have a motion to, for the first and second reading of proposed ordinance number seven dash twenty-two-five?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. Questions? You'll have Mr. Kober give us a synopsis?
Yes, so this is, uh, an ordinance to address hedges and, uh, again, sight of, line of sight issues. And this permits, uh, this continues to permit, uh, hedges on the border of corners, as well as, um, uh, adjacent to alleys, but there are limitations and, uh, such as the, um, when, when you get close to the sidewalk, the, um, I'm trying to look at the, just bear with me. I need to take a look at this again. And I think it cannot be any higher than thirty-six inches. Thirty inches, yep. Is it? No? And that does help out. Thank you. Yeah, it says sixteen dash ninety-one. Property is a corner lot, in which case the hedge or shrubbery is permitted along the corner lot line shall not exceed thirty inches and higher than six feet above the front of the sidewalk. Any other questions?
Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Proceed with the readings.
Proposed ordinance oh-seven dash two-zero-two-five, an ordinance of City of Allen Park Code of Ordinances, amending Chapter sixteen environment by the repeal and readoption of Article three, trees and shrubs, and readoption to read, to read Article three, trees, hedges, and shrubs, to define hedges and further regulate hedges and shrubs. Second reading of proposed ordinance oh-seven dash two-zero-two-five, an ordinance of City of Allen Park Code of Ordinances amending Chapter sixteen environment by the repeal and readoption of Article three, trees and shrubs, and readoption to read Article three trees, hedges, and shrubs, to define hedges and further regulate hedges and shrubs. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion for the first and second reading of proposed ordinance number zero-eight dash twenty-two-five?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Nick, second by Mr. Lloyd. Discussion.
Okay, so this, um, the land that's involved here is, I don't know if you're familiar with the Lappam Development, where all their new homes are being built? So, on the easterly, uh, end of that parcel, uh, there is a, a short road that provides access to the, uh, property owners who have the existing, you know, these homes have been there, pre-existing homes, uh, just to the east of this development. Uh, we are asking for a resolution to authorize the conveyance of that parcel to the, um, adjacent property owners. This would eliminate that street. This would provide, uh, the property owners with access to, uh, their garages, and it will also, uh, further the, uh, development. The, um, the property, this, uh, small parcel was dedicated to the city by the, uh, school board. And the school board has, uh, they conveyed their interest in the property already to the developer. However, um, the city maintains an interest in it as a result of that dedication.
Any comments or questions?
Just for clarification, this is from Horga North, right? Yeah, it's, it's... One block. It's just one block. Yeah, okay.
And also, for clarification, we refer to that as a road, but it was actually not a road.
Yeah. I remember that.
Any other comments or questions?
And just, uh, also, uh, the, um, the adjacent property owners are all in. Now, how much, how wide is that going to be? By, from the property line to thirty feet? Yeah. Twenty-eight feet, okay. The reason why is, I know the garages, you know, the turn radius and all that. Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We can have the first and second reading.
First reading of proposed ordinance oh-eight dash two-zero-two-five, an ordinance, an ordinance of City of Allen Park Code of Ordinances, amending Chapter two Administration, Article six, Finance, Division four, Conveyance, Conveyances or Leases of Lands of the City to authorize the conveyance of a small parcel of land previously dedicated by the Allen Park Public School District to be used as a road and described as all of Lot fifteen-twenty-five and the easterly twenty-seven feet of Lot fifteen-twenty-six and the easterly twenty-seven feet of Lot fifteen-fifty-five and all of Lot fifteen-fifty-six, Lincoln Manor Subdivision number three, as recorded in Library fifty-three, page sixty-nine of Platts, Wayne County Records. Wayne County, Michigan, excuse me. Uh, second reading of proposed ordinance oh-eight dash two-zero-two-five. An ordinance of City of Allen Park Code of Ordinances, amending Chapter two, Administration, Article six, Finance, Division four Conveyances or Leases of Lands of the City to authorize the conveyance of a small parcel of land previously dedicated by the Allen Park Public School District to be used as a road and described as all of Lot fifteen-twenty-five and the easterly twenty-seven feet of Lot fifteen-twenty-six and the easterly twenty-seven feet of Lot fifteen-fifty-five and all of Lots fifteen-fifty-six, Lincoln Manor Subdivision number three, as recorded in Library fifty-three, page sixty-nine of Platts, Wayne County, Michigan.
Thank you. May I have a motion for the first and second reading of proposed ordinance number nine dash twenty-two-five?
Motion.
Motion by?
Valerius.
Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barr. Discussion.
Aaron, you want to say anything? Police Chief Aaron, or are you good?
About the...
Social.
Shocked that we didn't have a law yet.
I'm shocked we didn't have one, but there's a state law we could have fell back on, but it's nice to have a local ordinance. Some of the money stays local then. Um, the, um, it's just a much-needed law. I mean, anytime we can capture funds that stay at our local court instead of state capturing them, does the city good. Um, I'm a proponent for it. You know, people shouldn't be walking around except for in social zones that we're going to set up and, you know, monitor. But, that's all I had to really say. I wasn't expecting to come up in speed. I'm sorry. I wasn't more prepared.
No, I'm sorry, Chief, to put you on the spot.
Oh, no, but no. It's, it's much needed and, you know, any questions?
So, basically, basically, there, there was already a state law that allows us to make, keep the funds locally.
The local, if it was a state, if we write a state statute, then the state will capture most of the funds. Now that we do a local statute, we will be able to capture more of the funds, which ultimately, whenever we have a, uh, city ordinance, we write those preferably because we want to capture the funds. So, anything that we can write an ordinance for, I always instruct the officers to do so, and that's been standard practice with us since I've gotten here.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing, yes.
Although, the comment I would make is that when we discussed this in Legal Affairs, we were all surprised that it wasn't already a local ordinance, but we were...
When I was reading it, I was like, I didn't realize we didn't have it either. I mean, we don't have a, a big problem with that, so it hasn't came up much. But, yeah, I was like a little shocked myself, you know, so obviously, the few times I've written it, it must have been the state statute I wrote. You know, but yes.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. We can now have the first and second reading.
Uh, first reading of proposed ordinance oh-nine dash two-zero-two-five, an ordinance of City of Allen Park Code of Ordinances, amending Chapter twenty-six. Offenses, Article six. Offenses against public morals, Division one, generally, by the adoption of Section twenty-six dash two-sixty-four open alcohol in public places to prohibit the possession or consumption of open alcohol in public places. Second reading of proposed ordinance oh-nine dash two-zero-two-five, an ordinance of City of Allen Park Code of Ordinances amending Chapter twenty-six. Offenses, Article six. Offenses against public morals, Division one generally by the adoption of Section twenty-six dash two-sixty-four open alcohol in public places to prohibit the possession or consumption of open alcohol in public places. And, um, I just note, you know, in here, we have, this section will not apply to an area established by the city as a social district, as a designated festival area, or the city's annual street fair where alcohol consumption is permitted in an area designated or operated by licensed vendors and establishments. So, once those social districts are established, that will not be a problem in those areas. Correct. And, I believe that's it.
That's it. Good. We will now move on to, uh, elected officials' comments, and we will start with Mr. Astimer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have nothing for you all tonight. Thank you, uh, all for coming out. God bless you and good night.
Mr. Mizzi. You're stealing Mr. Mizzi's lines. Mr. Mizzi.
Thank you all for coming out. God bless you and good night.
Uh, this evening, we'll start with Mr. Barr.
Okay, thank you. Um, I gotta say a thank you to, uh, Chief Feltz for the no-truck, uh, local delivery signs on Hanford uh, between Allen and the city, uh, line with Lincoln Park. Uh, let's hope these signs curtail some of the semi-traffic going between Dix and Allen. And, uh, I also want to thank, I believe it would be the DPW for putting them up, unless, unless he did them. Um, congratulations to Officer St. Andre and, uh, to Sergeant Aldy, uh, and to, um, Mr. Dag, Dig, uh, from DPS, or, um,
Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec, uh, for his five years. Um, as always, I want to give a shout-out to all of our hard-working, uh, city employees. Remember, we all work for the residents. Uh, also, I gave, uh, Chief Feltz some Safe Streets Southeast Michigan Campaign material. It's basically the same thing that we did a year ago, uh, that through SEMCOG, uh, the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments. Uh, it's got some stuff about, uh, driving, uh, bicycling, and even for pedestrians in that box. Um, let's see here. Let's get those. And, um, well, basically, an FYI, uh, today, in eighteen eighty-four, George Eastman, from Eastman Kodak, uh, patented the first paper strip for photography film. It was, he was given a, a patent for that. And, uh, even though the Lions lost, we're still rooting for them. And, yield.
Thank you. Mr. Schleck.
Thank you, Mayor. Just congratulations again to all the student commissioners that, uh, became commissioners today. I know they're doing, going to do a great job and keep up with their studies, so. I also wanted to congratulate once more Officer, or Sergeant Aldy and Officer St. Andre for their award and appointment as sergeant. And thank you to our guest that came up, Mark Bailey, Rep. Liberty, that updated us on the budget, and Perota, the Historical Commission, and former councilman Charles Blevins. Thank you. Yield.
Thank you. Mr. Lloyd.
Um, I just, uh, a couple of things that stand out on me, like, as a theme for today is, is this idea of, uh, impact in government, and, and it's been exciting since I've been up here. I know we've been up here for a while, but I, to see the student commissioner program grow. Um, I know, and, and, uh, she would never seek it out, but I'm going to give her the, the praise and the credit for it, as, uh, Mayor McLeod made that one of her um, key things that she wanted to institute when she came in to being mayor, is making sure that we grow this program. We had it on the books, but it was just not used. And since, um, her term began, we maybe had one or two, but seeing seven commissioners, seven student commissioners from three different schools. Um, and I believe our first returning commissioner, I'm not sure if we've ever had a returning commissioner before, um, is just amazing. And I know that the Historical Commission has been, uh, very big on, on their student commissioner. They now have two. I'm incredibly proud of, uh, April. She's one of my former APUS history students. She's going to be great. Um, so it's just such an amazing educational opportunity and such an amazing way to get involved in government. And just real quickly, um, Brayden Burns, who's going to be on Planning Commission, he was in my ELA class last year, and, uh, on the Planning Commission, which I sit on, we were just, we were deciding a decisive, um, a divisive issue. And I wanted to get some feedback from students, like, what their, their, their thoughts on it were, and, and Brayden had thoughts. I remember he was animated about his particular viewpoint, and so it's just really amazing to see, um, him having really big ideas and, um, big perspectives on what should be happening in the city and then taking the actions to actually do something about it. You know, it's, unfortunately, it's rare in our society. We have a lot of people complaining and not a lot of people doing anything about it, and so it's just, uh, big props to him for actually going out and, and doing something about it. Um, another big impact, um, and I've just got so much positive things to say about him. Len's done a phenomenal job as Historical Commission Chair and all the things, but, um, the, two of the ordinance that we came here today, and this is, I just, I think it's a great example of how this works well on a small level. Len was at a legal affairs, um, meeting about a completely different issue, and after we finished talking that up, he said, hey, I just noticed that, you know, as I'm driving, I'm on these corner blocks and I can't see the, the, the crossroads, because you have these giant hedges there. And it got us talking about it. We brought, um, I think Matt was already, might have already been there. We brought Matt in. Um, we brought, uh, Ken Simmerly, our ordinance officer, in and, um, you know, worked together to come up with something that addresses the issue. And I just, I have to point it out when it happens, because when government works well, I know that it's really easy, again, to point it all the ways that it doesn't, but we had a citizen that saw a problem. They pointed it out to their elected officials. The people that were, like, needed to get in the room, got in the room, and here we are. We are one reading away from it being a law, and I just think it's a, it's a very cool thing, and I'm very appreciative of, uh, Mr. Perota for all that he does, but for bringing up an issue and us, for, for giving us an opportunity to make the city a better place. Um, so, very much appreciative of everybody. Um, one final thing, just as a teacher, I'm driving to school in the, early in the morning. It, it always, this is like the, the concerning time for me, between now and daylight savings time, is that kids are walking to school and it is, it's really dark um, in those early hours until we get to... in those early hours, until we get to, I think, that first Sunday in November when we, when we fall back. So just as everybody's driving, I know that we're all in a hurry in the morning, trying to rush and get places. Uh, just make sure that you're taking extra time at those stop signs, make sure that we don't have any kids crossing, because, um, you know, they're, they're out there. So, um, with that, I yield, everybody have a great night.
Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, I think actually the other ordinance too was, another citizen brought that up in Legal Affairs, Mr. Perez. Which other one? The one with the, the growth.
Oh, yeah.
Ms. Nick.
I too want to thank the student commissioners for stepping up and, um, and Isabel for coming back. She has been a huge asset to the Historical Commission. So for the new student commissioners, don't be afraid to step up, don't be afraid to say something, because even though they're adults, they will listen and they have a lot of great ideas. So thank them for, for joining. So Ray Augustine, I see you back there, but I missed you saying something today at.
He's hiding.
At the, yeah, you're hiding, but welcome back. I know you weren't feeling well, so I'm glad you're feeling better and welcome back. Um, also too, I'd like to send prayers out to Dennis Marcos, so everybody say prayers for him. And then, um, moving forward, Mark Bailey, thank you very much for, for being thirty-seven years. I know I've worked many years with you at the pumpkin patch and picking up the pumpkins at Greenfield Village, and that is a lot of fun. If anybody, I don't know what time we're meeting, nine-thirty usually, I know it's late at night, but it's kind of cool going in there at night, picking up all the pumpkins. So if anybody's, you know, a late-night person like I am, just meet Mark over at the shoe store on Sunday, and it is a lot of fun to go in there when nobody's there. I'd like to thank the firefighters for all that they do, I know we're down to seventeen firefighters. Um, we did have one that just got injured and he's going to have a, a little bit of a recovery. So say some prayers for him, but thank them very much for living in all the construction that they're doing and all the runs that they're making. Um, when you leave tonight, though, the, I know that it's the end of the season for the Detroit Tigers, but the Historical Museum did do our showcase here in City Hall, and it has a lot of the Tiger things in it, so please, if you're up here, look at that. And then, um, and that is it, thank you very much, everybody be safe.
Thank you. Mr. Valerius.
I just wanted to start by thanking, uh, Len Prata too, and everyone in the Historical Commission for the decorations out in front of the Historical House. Looks awesome, and I'm sure it's going to be much appreciated by trick-or-treaters and everyone come Halloween. Uh, also thanks to all the student commissioners, I think, you know, all the teacher Dan Lloyd can attest, it's nice to see the younger generation want to get involved and participate in their government and city government in general, so. Uh, as a, I'm sure my fellow teacher, again, Mr. Lloyd can attest, seems like it's been a lot longer than a month and a half since school started. Fall is here, although the weather doesn't seem very fall-like, at least in my views. There's sixty-eight more days till winter. Seventy-two days till Christmas, and seventy-nine days until twenty twenty-six. So I say this simply because time flies by, and I just ask everyone to cherish each and every day. Always take that opportunity, opportunity to tell those you love, that you love them. Call your parents, call your children, call your friends, just to say hello. Do it now while you have the opportunity to do so. And with that, I yield.
Thank you. Well, it's funny that someone mentioned Mr. Marcos, because as I was reading through something today, I believe that it was designated as National Dessert Day, so you know what to do when you leave here. There's not too much, you know, we've, we've given our accolades, again, we are very, very proud of all of our employees. And the fact that many of them are often in harm's way, and that also holds true for our DPS department, particularly as we know, when we have sewer breaks and, and highly inclement weather. There's not too much else to say, I, I did find that unfortunately, we missed celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month, which was from September fifteenth to October fifteenth. So I put a tickler in my file to not miss that again next year. Usually, we will get communications from various organizations asking us to do a proclamation, but in this instance, I have had to go seeking a source, so see if we can rectify that next year. It was good to see some old faces here, I know that Ms. Shovat came in, particularly for, for Officer Arnoldi's promotion. It was great to see her, as many of you know, she was a regular mainstay within our community and very, very active. And first and foremost, again, deepest thanks to our state representative, Mr. Tulio Libarati. He has done more for us in his time in office than I, than I can recall any, anyone else doing. And we are very, very appreciative of the hard work he's putting in, I'm sure it was a little more difficult this year than it was in past years. So again, very much appreciated. Uh, and with that, I will not belabor the point, we've been here long enough. I will ask for a call, a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Nick.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you, we are adjourned at seven sixteen PM.